All right. Good evening. It's a huge crowd here this evening. Appreciate everybody coming out. Let's go ahead and call the meeting to order of July 12, 2022. We have an invocation this evening by Imam Abdul Samad Moti. Did I get that correct? Close enough. And from the Islamic Center of Temecula Valley. And this evening's flag salute could be led by our own councilwoman, Jessica Alexander.
Bismillah, Rahman, and Rahim. In English, that is translated to "in the name of God most compassionate, most merciful." It is indeed befitting that we begin this city council meeting with the message of mercy and compassion. We pray, our Lord, that the people of our city, country, and around the world, that they are still anxious about their health and the health and safety of their loved ones due to the COVID pandemic. People are worried about their jobs, the cost of housing, rising inflation, and putting food on the table for their families. Oh, Lord, bless our mayor, city council members, city staff, healthcare workers, and local businesses as we come out stronger than ever from the challenges of the past few years. We ask you, oh Lord, to guide them to serve with mercy and compassion and advocate for equality, liberty, and justice for all Temecula residents. Thank you. Amen and Amin.
Hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Can we have the roll call, please?
Yes, Councilmember Alexander.
Here.
Councilmember Edwards.
Here.
Mayor Ron.
Here.
Councilmember Schwenk is absent. Councilmember Stewart.
Here.
All right. And first up this evening is a presentation by the Riverside County Habitat Conservation Agency and Harry Sandoval.
Good evening, sir. Thank you, Mayor Ron. Councilmembers here for the -- my name is Harry Sandoval. I'm with the Riverside County Habitat Conservation Agency. I'm the Natural Resource Manager. And today, I'm here to recognize the city of Temecula for their promotion of sustainable development and also the conservation or the protection of sensitive species as well. I'm going to give a little background before I get into the award here. In 1988, the Stevens kangaroo rat was listed as endangered by the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. That led to a drastic slowdown in development within Western Riverside County. In response to that, the city of Temecula joined nine other cities and the county of Riverside in forming the Riverside County Habitat Conservation Agency in 1991. Following that, by 1996, all the member agencies had signed on to the Habitat Conservation Plan, focused development, and set aside some land for conservation for the Stevens kangaroo rat. By 2008, the Riverside County Habitat Conservation Agency had completed the Assembly of a Reserve System in Western Riverside County, which permanently conserved approximately 44,000 acres. From there, we started to manage the land. We started to restore and enhance habitat for the Stevens kangaroo rat. And that brings us to our present time. In February of this year, the Riverside County Habitat Conservation Agency, along with the partners that we have, was able to demonstrate to the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service that the Stevens kangaroo rat is no longer in danger of being extinct. Therefore, the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service downlisted the kangaroo rat from endangered to threatened. That is a major milestone. It's a rare occurrence for a species to be downlisted in Southern California. So it's quite the achievement for our region and the city in Temecula overall. So we're here now in the next step and hopefully the final process of recovery for the Stevens kangaroo rat. This fall, we are going to be undertaking a range-wide monitoring, which will include approximately 30 agencies throughout Western Riverside County, San Diego County as well. We hope that the data that we collect from these -- from this monitoring program is going to lead to the full and final recovery of the species. So with all that said, again, we'd like to recognize the city of Temecula and present this award for the commitment, the guidance, and the leadership that you have provided over the years. We really appreciate that. We realize that we cannot have done what we did without you. And we look forward to the future and hopefully celebrating with you sooner than later next time. Thank you very much for your time. We appreciate that.
Thank you so much. I will come down and grab that for me if you don't mind.
I'll take a picture. Okay, wait a minute. Now, close. Come here, so you can get a picture for Shannon.
Yeah.
There you go. Cheese. One more. Got it. Thank you. Not your best, Matt.
Not my best.
Sorry.
All right.
Check the other one.
So I hear -- thank you for that. I hear Stu is -- he's going to do the kangaroo rat call for us this evening, too. All right, all right, perfect. Now, you know, this was a nice step forward. I was happy to be on the first trip back to Washington, D.C., several years ago, to start pushing the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service to start to downlist and de-list that species. So it's nice to see so many years later that that's actually come to fruition. So congratulations on that and thank you for all the hard work that the RCHCA does on our behalf. All right. Next up, we have board and commission reports. Let's go ahead and start with Mr. Watts this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members, staff, and members of the public and those watching at home on TV. I just have to mention that I do not miss managing several thousand acres of the management plan in my other life. So retirement is much better. But anyhow, congratulations. It's a good effort. And Stevens kangaroo rat is one of many that need the protection, so. Okay, our last meeting was on June 15. And do we have a slide tonight? Apparently not. Anyhow, briefly, the planning commission serves as the designated statutory planning agency for the city of Temecula, reviews and makes recommendations on topics related to subdivisions, specific plans, zone changes, plot plans, and conducts legally required public hearings. Our last meeting on June 15, we heard a staff presentation on a proposed shopping cart ordinance, and we passed it unanimously to send it to you folks tonight. And you'll hear that item, so I won't bore you with the specifics of that unless staff -- I don't want to steal their thunder. I will mention that our next meeting is next Wednesday night, and we do have two items that might be of interest to people. We're going to be here -- have a public hearing on a proposed car wash here in Uptown, I think. And then we're going to have a proposal on a proposed plan amendment, general plan amendment, and also a 134 -- I think it's 134-unit apartment building project that is proposed to go in on Rancho, California, east of the Duck Pond, all the way up toward the Palomar Shopping Center. The last vacant land, I think, on Rancho, California, east of the 15 within the city limits. So we'll be done with dealing with any sort of projects there. Anyhow, you're all welcome to come. Those will be two public hearings on that. And you're welcome to come and hear the staff presentation. To give you an idea, this is the -- this is our report for next week. So anybody says the planning commission doesn't work, I beg to differ. So thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. That's my report. Any questions?
No, we're good. Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Kathy Seismar, Community Services. Good evening.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Ron. It's council members. As you know, I'm the Community Services Chairperson for our commission of five. We have commissioners Ewan Hawkes, Chris Kristofsky, Eric Levine, Vice Chair Gary Adi, and myself. The purpose of our commission is to review and make recommendations on topics related to the parks and rec element of the general plan and to provide parks and rec services and programs for the community. Next slide. Our last meeting was on June 13, 2022. During our meeting, we approved our action minutes for May 9. And we also had a pretty full commissioner report section. Our commissioners are pretty busy and really participate in a wide spectrum of activities that community services offers. So we had Commissioner Ewan Hawkes was sharing about her experiences with her family at our Second Saturday Cultural Events. And Vice Chair Adi and myself also shared about our experiences. We, along with Mayor Protem Schwenk and Matt Peters from Planning, we had an opportunity to share about biking and our bike trails and our bike lane systems in the city of Temecula with the Temecula Valley Chamber of Commerce during Bike Month. So we had an opportunity to share that with the commission. We did four out of the five, participated in our Star Spangled Fourth of July Parade. We appreciated having that opportunity. It was great to be back in Old Town for it. Our next meeting will be on August the 8th, 2022. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. All right, moving on to public safety report. We have our new colleague here and chief -- battalion chief for Cal Fire. If you wouldn't mind introducing yourself and give us your report this evening. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Ron. Here we go. Thank you, Mayor Ron. Council members and staff, public that's here. My name is Mike Ballinger. I'm new battalion chief here for Temecula. New position for me. I am not a new battalion chief, but I am new to working in the city of Temecula, obviously. I've been here a couple times for past member -- or past city council members when we were invited for some closed-door stuff. But this is my first time on this side. So thank you, guys. I look forward to working with you guys and girls and hopefully collaborating and working towards some good stuff for the public safety. For the city of Temecula Fire Department, we have a few stats to go over for this past month of June. Mainly 611 medical calls. We have a little bit of an uptick on the traffic collisions. We had about 65, 64 of those. A lot of the public assists. And even though the fire -- the false alarms are there, but they don't capture a lot of the cooking fires that were happening and some of the other fires that weren't quite the fiscal damage for those things. Now that the fire season is upon us, we hope -- we were planning on having a productive wildlife fire season, so that's already kicked off in the surrounding areas and the county areas around us. But there's still more to come with those things with the hot weather and the dryness. Next slide, please. And then for the -- for the plans review, everything seems to be going as noted before. I know it says April, but those are for June stats. Everything, we had 30 inquiries, and it seems to be on track with every other past month. Annual inspections died off just a little bit, but that's expected in June with the summer and everybody getting out of school and going on vacation, different things there. The construction inspections, the plans reviews, those are still on track, and those tied in with the RFP that they just had for the plans review consultant that they just renewed. It was the same person, same company we were using before or the city was using before. They won the RFP, and they just kind of renewed that agreement to continue that relationship. That's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Excellent. Well, thank you for joining the team and welcome to Temecula. All right, moving on to public comment. Do we have any non-agenda public comments this evening?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. We have three public comments on non-agendized items, two in person and one email. The rules are as indicated in the published agenda. Each speaker has three minutes. The first speaker is Payam Dunshivar, and the next speaker is Bob Cal. Payam?
I have a lot of things to say at the same time. I'm going to show slides as well as I couldn't print them well. My name is Payam Dunshivar. I came from Iran, and we did not swim here. I came here when I was 10. I stayed in Michigan. My parents, they saw the -- my parents' generation saw a country change. It's almost like a statue. One says mold that cannot go back. We're in it now. Here are some news sources -- I will show them at the end -- that can help real news versus the fake news. But the real -- the thing is that this -- they're trying to run their Agenda 2030 sooner. The Great Reset, World Economic Forum. I'm sure you know about it, the great -- we're in the Great Collapse right now. I'm going to just -- sorry, this is -- all right. So basically, you know, Klaus Schwab, Bill Gates, Soros, they're all behind it. They're all doing this, they're all -- and that we have to be more aware of it. And California -- and no offense to anyone, I think California is the lost cause politically, but thankfully, we are at the tip of the spear. And we can show other states and other cities who have some issues like Arizona, Georgia, Wisconsin, Michigan, New Hampshire, New Mexico, Nevada, to take action, Pennsylvania. So I think forensic audits should be done. I know it does cost money, but we need to release the -- how the election was rigged. All the evidence is on PeterNevaro.com, 2,000 mules. Well, sure, you saw that. I would like to suggest that we play that on a big screen monitor like in concerts doing that security. I also like to suggest to have 24/7 cameras at drop boxes and volunteers to monitor those at all times. I'd like to talk about the dangers of 5G as I'm scrolling down here. I ask for all new installments to be halted, even if it's ordered by California. Let's not go -- let's go against a globalist agenda. Let's not comply. Why would we? It's hurting us. EMF, electromagnetic field affects cognitive function, change of emotion, mental state, headaches, can cause cancers. Let's not make our city a smart city. This safe-a-frog hat I'm wearing? I love animals. I'm vegan. But this has a deeper meaning. Pesticides like atrazine. Studies have shown turns frog -- male frogs mate only with male frogs. They're putting that in our food, air, and water. I'd like us to investigate that. I'd like us to go and see what these chemtrails and airplanes that they're spraying.
Sir, your time is up. Sorry.
All right, I'll just -- I'll finish the rest of it next time. Thank you for your time. Infowars.com, band dot video, and Steve Bannon's show on a Real America's Voice and Citizen Free Press. And --
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Bob Cal.
Good evening.
Hey, there. I like that guy's shirt, by the way. With the advent of the overturning of Roe versus Wade, there's been a tax on the pregnancy help clinics like the one that Jessica Alexander works in in Temecula. Not hers specifically, but across the country. There have been a tax on those particular things. I'd like to bring that to your attention to maybe look after them a little bit more, if you can. But the second one is there's a fundraiser for the birth choice, and that is coming up on August the 6th. It's a South Coast Winery. I bought a table. I urge everybody, everybody that does support alternatives to abortion, to buy a table and support the cause of life. And that's all I have to say tonight. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. And we have one written?
Yes, and then we have one written. It is from Suzanne Lane. Good evening. In regards to the drag queen shows in Old Town Temecula, this type of entertainment is inappropriate for Temecula and Old Town where so many families are present. Temecula has historically been a classy, family-friendly place, a Bible belt of Southern California. We do not approve of this element. The schools are already strategically sexualizing our children and grandchildren. Please do not add to this. This lewd entertainment is detrimental and only the beginning of the slippery slope that follows, if allowed, to continue. Are there no standards whatsoever for what we should desire in our Temecula businesses? Are you hoping that we are the next Las Vegas? Strip clubs and Satan's clubs? Satan's clubs? Where is the line? If you have a moral compass and a line that can be crossed, please figure out what it is soon. This drag queen agenda is rampant throughout our state and nation right now and clearly part of the woke agenda. It needs to be prohibited now. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, that concludes all in-person and emailed comments on non-agendized items.
Okay, thank you very much. City council reports. Who would like to go first? Stu?
Okay, could I have a slide? Yeah, there we go. So the Fourth of July Parade, which, by the way, is the first one since 2019, so three years ago, was a huge success. I mean, the weather was absolutely perfect. There was about 5,000 -- 4,000 spectators in Old Town. We had 50 entries, and, you know, we had the old-fashioned horse equine color guard. And so it was a really, really cool, small-towny thing. And then over to the sports park, starting from 2 until like 10, we had the spectacular. So it basically is bands all day. It kind of reminded me when I was there, it reminded me more of like a festival, like a music festival, because there was literally one band after another, after another. It was like four or five bands throughout the day. Very, very cool event. And I talked to them, and there were quite a few people from outside of our city. So it just goes to show you how unique this event really is. So again, great job. Great job to our community service department for pulling that together. And in fact, the -- there was a couple of vendors who literally ran out of food. There were 28,000 estimated there. It could have been as high as 30. But it was really well done, and everybody seemed to be having a good time without going too far. So that was the cool part. It was like, you know, this is Temecula. So thank you for putting out such a spectacular event, and that's all I got.
Wonderful. Thank you. Anyone else? All right, I have a couple of quick items. I think we have some slides for some of these as well. So just wanted to give a quick update on the local control subcommittee. This was something that was brought up a little while ago, and you all had approved. Just wanted to report out on that really quickly, is that we are working on a strategic plan for 2023 for the legislative sessions coming up. And then, pretty exciting opportunity to develop short, mid, and long-range goals for advocacy and engagement. And we're seeing that more and more now, and we've had a number of conversations in different subcommittees, public safety and others, on local control issues most recently. And so we are definitely in the right mode here. And I know it's a little bit hard to read, but under the guiding principles here, it's preservation of local control, promotion of fiscal stability, and support of funding opportunities. And so we're going to maintain that, but spend quite a bit of our effort on the local control piece as well. So look forward to bringing forward a more robust platform on all of this in the near future to everybody and see us actually make some decent progress getting our voice heard. All right, next one, please. So just to let everybody know, save the date, August 2, 2022, is National Night Out. And it's going to be from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. in the Civic Center Quad. National Night Out is an annual community building campaign that enhances the relationship between neighbors and law enforcement, and it's held annually on the first Tuesday in August of every year. The event is going to be in front of City Hall from 6 to 8. Sheriff's Department is working with Community Services Department on the event logistics, so stay tuned for more details. But I just want to give you a heads up that that's coming here pretty soon. Next one is just a reminder that this Saturday, July 16, at Corner Bakery Cafe here in Temecula from 8:00 to 9:30, we're going to do coffee with the mayor, me. And so I'll be hanging out there, and it's an opportunity. We'll be discussing public safety issues. And so we'll have representatives from our public safety staff and myself just hanging out, having a cup of coffee and having a good conversation. So hope to see you out there as well. And then, speaking of local control and advocacy and all of that, we have a short video from our colleague, Mr. Schwenk, who is enjoying the wilds of Washington, D.C.
Hey there, Temecula. I just wanted to peek into tonight's meeting and say hi. I know the stomach bugs have been going around. But I'm actually in Washington, D.C., as you can see. U.S. Capitol directly behind me. I'm here next couple days to meet with members of Congress on behalf of RTA as the Chair of the Riverside Transit Agency Board of Directors. I'm here to work to bring funds, federal funds, back to our county and ultimately to Temecula as well. So just wanted to check into the meeting. Hope everybody has a good night, colleagues. Hello. Hope you guys all have a good meeting. Take care.
All right. Nice tie. All right. Let's see. Anything else from anybody?
Just had a quick clarification. What is the National Night Out thing? What are they going to do here? I'm kind of -- I don't know what's going on.
Erica, if you want to maybe chime in on that a little bit for us? I know they're in the process of figuring that out right now.
Yes, indeed. So National Night Out is celebrated on August 2, and it's a way of highlighting what public -- the role public safety plays in the community. So for our National Night Out, we'll be partnering with RSO, and we'll have, you know, vehicles here and booths, and the kids can learn more about the role public safety plays in our community. But we'll also be partnering with fire as well. And given our location right here, it'll be right here in front of City Hall. So given that location where we have a fire station right down the street and we have a police storefront here in City Hall, it's just kind of a perfect setting for that, unless Lieutenant Regali would like to jump in with anything else there?
Councilmember, I might add, too. This is something that's been on our radar for several years. We just have not been able to pull the trigger, and then we entered into a global pandemic. So the last couple of years, obviously, not a lot of events have gone on. But it has been something that we felt strongly that we could -- our community would benefit from. So I'll turn over to Lieutenant.
Good evening, sir. Erica did a good job of covering it, but really, this event is designed to allow for police and fire to meet with members of the community in a relaxed environment. We just an opportunity to talk, talk about some of the issues that might be impacting their particular street neighborhoods. And so the event is just designed to allow for that exchange to occur in an open space, let the kids sit on the motorcycles, climb into a patrol car. And again, it's just designed to facilitate that interaction with police and fire and members of the community.
So it's kind of like a get-to-know-you event.
Yeah, that's exactly right. It's usually well-attended, lots of families, lots of little kids, and they crawl in the police cars, they get on the motorcycles. We'll have the horses out. We'll bring a canine out. And again, just an opportunity to see us in a different light, right? When there's not some sort of an emergency we're trying to unwind.
Right.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks so much. All right, moving on to the consent calendar. We have a bunch of items here. Let's go ahead and read through these. First item is waive the reading of standard ordinances and resolutions. Second is approve action minutes of June 14, 2022. Third, approve list of demands. Fourth, approve First Amendment with Kiwanis Club of Temecula Valley Foundation for the Run 4K Honor Wine. Fifth, approve cumulative purchases of miscellaneous materials, services, and supplies anticipated to exceed $60,000 per vendor for fiscal year 2021-22. Six, approve a fee waiver for grading plan check and inspection fees for the Meadowview Streambed Restoration Project. And seven, approve agreement with Proactive Fire Design and Consulting, Inc. for the Fire Department Plan Review Services. Eight, approve Sixth Amendment to the Agreement for Consultant Services with Eskil LLC for Plan Review Services. Number nine, approve agreement for consultant services with STC Traffic, Inc. for the Fiber Rapid Communication Citywide Project PW 22-03. Ten, approve parcel map 38110 located southeast corner of Rancho, California Road and Meadows Parkway. Eleven, approve plans and specifications and authorize solicitation of construction bids for the Community Recreation Center renovation Phase 1 PW 19-07. And lastly, establish and always stop control at the intersection of Priest Lane and Tierra Vista Road/Buckeye Road.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
If I could, on item number six, the fee waiver of the grading plan check and inspection fee for Meadowview Streambed Restoration Project, Councilmember Stewart will be abstaining on that since he lives in Meadowview. But since this is on the consent calendar, he does not need to leave the dais unless the council member asks to have that removed from the consent calendar.
Okay.
Move approval noting Councilmember -- Councilmember's abstention. Move approval noting Councilmember, Councilmember's abstention. I'm looking to see the numbers on item number six.
Second from Mr. Stewart. Please cast your votes. All right, and that passes 4-0 with noted abstention on number six from Mr. Stewart. All right, I'm going to recess the City Council meeting to the Community Services.
I will call to order the Temecula Community Service District. It looks like, do we have any public comment?
No, Mr. President, the rule will reflect that everybody is still present except Council, except Board Member Schwenk. And we do not have any public comments on non-agendized items.
Which I'm always disappointed, but we'll move on. So now we're on to the consent calendar, which is item number 13, approve action minutes of June 14th, 2022.
Move approval, second.
It's been moved and seconded, please vote. Right, that passes 4-0. Director?
Yes, indeed. If we can bring up the slide, let's see, there we go. So we just wanted to remind everyone about our summer concert series, which I know, Mr. President, you are a big fan of yourself. I think our president missed his first concert ever last week and he's very upset about it. So our next one coming up is Stone Soul on July 14th. That's an extremely popular band. And then we have Journey Captured and Detroit Underground rounding out the month. These free concerts take place from 7:00 to 8:30 PM. Gates open at 5:00 PM, giving attendees plenty of time to set up their chairs for the performance. And then I'd like to remind everybody, we're having a movie in the park this Friday, July 22nd. We'll be showing Encanto at the Sports Ranch at Somers Bend. And we're very excited about this because it's our first movie in the park at Somers Bend. So it's a great venue for it. There's plenty of space. It's going to be a lot of fun, so we encourage everybody to come on out for that. For that one, the activities begin at 6:30 and the movie will be shown at dusk, which is the only thing to keep in mind. Dusk is a little bit later right now because we're in the middle of the summer. So for people with younger children, just kind of bear in mind the timing there. And that concludes my report.
All right, and if you've never been to the summer concert series, it is the best. I mean, it's, if you ever want to experience a small-town experience, that's where you go. Because it's, it's a lot of people, but it's not. And they're down in the front dancing to the music. It's just a really, really cool vibe. So if you get a chance to go to one of those concerts, do it. You won't regret it. So, all right, so general manners report.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too just wanted to say thank you and job well done to the entire Community Services Department for the Fourth of July, not only the fireworks show, but the parade and all that goes on behind the scenes. But also every operating department has to support these. So from police, to fire, to Public Works and everyone in between, my thanks. You guys, you guys did a great job over that holiday weekend, so thank you.
All right, does our directors have any comments? Board?
Negative.
Okay, so I will adjourn until the next time.
All right, I'll reconvene our City Council meeting for this evening. And item number 14 in public hearings is to adopt resolution to approve solid waste and recycling rates for commercial customers for fiscal year 2022 to 2023. We'll get a report from Mr. Thomas.
Yes, actually Julie Tarrant, our Principal Management Analyst in Public Works is going to provide the staff report. But I just wanted to remind you that this item and hearing is to consider the commercial rates that are charged by CRNR directly to their business customers. And if this is approved, it would become retroactively effective to July 1st. So again, this is just for the commercial rates. The residential rates that are charged to the residential customers, those is collected through our Service Level D, which is part of our TCSD rates and charges, which will be on the council agenda at your next meeting on July 26th. So with that, I will turn it over to Ms. Tarrant.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers, staff, members of the public. I'm Julie Tarrant with the Public Works Department and I'm presenting a brief overview of the proposed solid waste and recycling rates for commercial customers for the new fiscal year 22, 23. As you know, we have an exclusive franchise agreement with CRNR for the collection of trash and recycling materials. This agreement allows for annual increases to the collection rates for both residential and commercial services based on CPI landfill disposal fees and the extraordinary increases in the cost of collection. For 22, 23, commercial rates are to adjust as follows. CPI is 5.37%. Oops, sorry, it didn't go. There it is, sorry. 5.37% for CPI, landfill disposal fee of $2.81 per ton. And for... It's got a delay, sorry. There it is. Don't move. And then CRNR is also requesting an additional SB 1383 compliance fee of 3.4%. This fee will only apply to, or will apply to all rates except for the residential monthly fees. SB 1383 is the most recent state legislation in effect January 1st in a statewide effort to reduce emissions of short-lived climate pollutants. State, county, and city jurisdictions, along with their waste haulers, are required to implement various programs to meet compliance measures. As our partner, CRNR, has been instrumental in providing assistance to city staff to initiate some of these programs. This fee is to offset their costs to implement SB 1383 compliance requirements to include additional personnel. Sorry, let's go. Reporting requirements that are due quarterly and annually to the state and to the county. Public education and outreach, equipment costs, audit and material monitoring costs. And as shown in this example, it didn't go. Sorry. There you go. Okay, in this example, the commercial rate increase for two, three, and four cubic yard bins is an average of 9.25% or $12.27 per month. Commercial rates do vary depending on the size of the bin and also on the frequency of the services. Staff recommends the approval of the solid waste and recycling rates for commercial customers for fiscal year 22, 23. And if approved, these rates will be in effect July 1st, 2022. This concludes our presentation. Thank you.
Okay, let's go ahead and see if there's any questions first. Anyone? None. Saying none, let's go ahead and open the public hearing. And do we have any public comment?
We do not.
So, do we have any council comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
I should also point out that this was, being that this is a public hearing, a notice was sent to all of the customers as well. So they were all informed of this hearing.
Thank you.
So just one thing, just that I've been noticing also, and I know everything with inflation's going on in our, in our country. There is a big concern for me for small businesses and large businesses, just in general, even for our nonprofits in our area, who I know in a large way are struggling right now in some areas financially. As I just looked at some of the reports that was given to me, I saw back in 2021, there's a 12, 12.2% increase for the, you know, the haul and the trash. And now I just, it's a concern of mine that now we're at 22, 23, and now we're at almost a 17% increase. And so I just, I'd like to be able to see what we can do in some way to help. I know we have the Subcommittee that's working on it, but even to help out more for the, the small businesses, if there's a way to be able to work on that. I know I spoke to Aaron Adams about it and it's kind of, it's hard just to do a one-shot deal. But is there something that was discussed maybe in the Subcommittee that we can talk about in being able to help out the small businesses so these rate increases don't continue, even though it's a 3% coming directly from the state?
Well, as a small business, usually the landlord is the one who provides the dumpsters.
Right.
So, and then they hit up the tenant. So it's, it's kind of less of a burden because it's not a direct increase per se to the tenant. It's more, you know, if you got triple net, they're, they're going to tap you through that. So, so I just know what the state is requiring these, these trash companies to do. And everything they're requiring costs money. And so between, you know, the tipping fee for the dump.
Yep.
That's getting crazy.
Yep.
And, you know, all the requirements of separation for recyclables and stuff like that. So I don't think it's unreasonable for them to, because they can't lose money.
I get that. No, I know.
That's the bottom line.
Absolutely.
So they got to do what they got to do and unfortunately, we have to pay it.
No, I know. It's just, I'm just looking, is there anything more that, I don't know who was in the Subcommittee, I think it's, maybe Matt Ron? And is it Schwenk or is it Marian?
The Sustainability Subcommittee is Mayor Ron and Councilmember Stewart. And we actually do have a Sustainability Subcommittee meeting scheduled for, I believe it's the first week of August to talk about the franchise agreement.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
It's definitely a concern and, you know, but if you look across, you know, the CPI is something we expect, right?
Absolutely.
That's kind of programmed in and we recognize that. But 1383 added in a lot of externalities that, you know, weren't anticipated and it was an unfunded mandate. And so it just adds to the burden for these businesses. And, and then the landfill itself too, the management of landfill, the, the new regulations requirements that are being passed on to them. You know, they're just passing, you know, it's just, just this constant trickle-down effect. And yeah, it's terrible for, for businesses because you're seeing these, you know, significant increases every year. You know, one of the things I was thinking is, is as we start to contemplate some of our own grant programs or, you know, potential offsets, I don't know if there's, you know, within any of the funds that we've allocated through the, not the ARPA funds, but, you know, Mr. Adams, you know what I'm talking about.
Yeah, the COVID.
Yeah, the COVID, the COVID relief program, and that's what Councilmember Alexander and I were discussing this morning is the City Council, as we sit here today, has basically appropriated all of those dollars. So those are spoken for into, remember the six different areas of the community? And, and some of those included nonprofits and there were business grants in there. What I will say though is it's, it's quite likely that we will be needing to come back to the City Council to reprioritize some of that funding that was earmarked, for, for example, for outdoor dining grants, because there's no longer outdoor dining. And so I, I think we're going to have a need to sort of revisit some of those dollars that were previously programmed. If that's the will of the council to set those up for one time, and that was my message this morning, is these are ongoing costs and this is a one-time, you know, infusion, we could look into that. And that might be something that we revisit with the Subcommittee.
I got a question.
Yes.
So you mentioned the business grants. Do we still have funding in that? Do we have money that never got claimed for businesses?
There aren't, the business grant aspect of, if we're talking about the $7 million this fiscal year and the $7 million next fiscal year, the business grants that I recall were tied to, one, the outdoor dining program, nonprofits, homelessness, affordable housing, mental health.
Yep.
But there wasn't a, oh, the incubator offset for rent. But there wasn't a general business category, you know, sort of category. And Jennifer, Kevin, or anyone else, if I'm missing something here, but there wasn't a general business grant program. It was in those respective categories.
Well, maybe, maybe that's something we should consider in our sustainability conversation is for businesses who are struggling, especially small businesses, that, you know, can verify that they are struggling, maybe we should offer some sort of small business grant using some of this money.
Absolutely.
Like I said, I think, I think we're going to need to revisit because some of that money is not going to go where the City Council appropriated it.
Right.
So that'll free up something.
Yeah, okay.
And that was one of the...
And it may be this fiscal year and it might be next fiscal year. I have to look at it.
Yeah, and that was one of the things that I was kind of looking at too. I know we were talking about that this morning, is looking into some of those grants. And, you know, we'd love to have endless money come in to a point. But it's just, like I said, I mean, I know everybody's feeling the pinch, you know, it doesn't matter at what perspect, you know, if you're rich, if you're, you know, if you're on the, the level of just, you know, you're just, you're just barely making it through, everybody's feeling it. And so, so yeah, I just, and the other question I just had was, and maybe somebody can teach me this, is how often are these going up? Because I, I'm seeing, you know, we had a couple of 1% and then we get a massive jump of 12%. And now we're at 17%. Obviously, this is a different year, so teach me what that normally looks like, if you can.
Excuse me, the, the franchise agreement allows for...
Sorry, Pat.
I'm sorry. It allows for an increase annually based on the CPI and the tipping fee. And that was about 6% of the increase for this year. The additional 3% was the amount that was needed to cover the cost of this SB 1383. So that was, that was this year. The last, over, the information that, that you saw was over the last five years. And going back a couple of years, the CPI and the tipping fee increase have been relatively small. So that's why those increases were small in those few years. And I think it was two or three years ago, there was another larger increase. And it was another extraordinary increase that was requested by CRNR and approved. And that was to cover the cost of the anaerobic digester, for operation of the anaerobic digester and for what was called the China Sword issue, which was the markets for the recycled materials kind of all went away. So they didn't have a way to, to be able to sell that material. So, so they, they were given a, a larger increase that year for those two reasons. But, but normally on an annual basis, it's, it's just that CPI and the landfill fee.
So it's typically around that 1% to 3% of what it was.
This year, the, the landfill and the CPI fee were relatively high, just because of the fact of the, the national inflation and the CPI being the highest it's ever been this year for the last many years.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And the unfunded mandate that Matt was talking about.
Right.
So that's what's, what's causing this to be jacked like this.
Absolutely, yes.
But the only thing that, that residents are paying is the exact cost. And we know what it costs.
Right, no, absolutely. Yeah, no, it's just, it's just in general, you know, like I said, we're all feeling it, so.
There have been years when CRNR has given us, you know, reductions because their fuel costs were down so low.
Absolutely.
But I would say not as often as, you know, they have increases.
Mr. Mayor, one, one final thing. I did want to recognize Alex, Alex Brakovich. He snuck in the back there with CRNR. So if there are any other technical questions that you need from, from the operator, whatever, he is here to field those questions as well.
Any questions for Alex?
We're good.
I'm kind of curious. Fuel costs. How has that impacted CRNR? Do they?
It's a good answer.
Because you make, you make your own fuel.
Good evening, Alex.
Good evening, everybody, Honorable Mayor, Council, and staff. My name is Alex Brakovich with CRNR. Fortunately, we have the anaerobic digester, because that way we are able to control our own fuel costs. And that's one of the beauties of the anaerobic digester, because we're converting our fuel or our fleet to compressed natural gas, renewable natural gas. And that fuel that we produce, which is quite frankly about the same price as we pay SoCal gas for the gas, but we control it. And if they have a spike, we don't have the spike. So it helps us to control that part of our costs. But to, to answer Councilmember Alexander's question earlier, you know, I was speaking to the mayor earlier today. 1383 is 1383. I've been saying for the past three years, get ready, cities, because this is coming. And I've seen price increases of 30, 40, 50% in some cities. And it's, it's something that is challenging for all of us. But an unfunded mandate is an unfunded mandate. And unfortunately, we as consumers are at the end of that unfunded mandate. And so we, we have to deal with it. The rate increase this year is about 5.3%, I think. I didn't bring it up with me. CPI, the 8.6% is what we pay the county for disposal costs. That's, that's what their disposal costs went up. And the 1383 cost, we try to keep as low as we possibly can, just over 3%. So, you know, Temecula still has the lowest commercial rates. So, you know, Temecula still has the lowest commercial rates in our area, and we're very proud of that. So we're, we're doing everything we can on our side to mitigate it. But as Pat knows, there's a lot of work that goes behind keeping the city in compliance with 1383. We have hired a number of people, increased our costs significantly, just to keep the city in compliance with 1383, because the last thing the city wants is CalRecycle coming down and, you know, checking out what you're doing or not doing. So that's, that's what really is important to us, is to work with Pat and his team and Julie to make sure that the city stays in compliance. And that takes a lot of hard work behind the scenes, and we're very proud of where we're at with that issue.
Alex, can you do me a favor and talk about a little bit, are you guys still sending out people to investigate the garbage? Just so our public has, I mean, there's a great opportunity to be able to talk about that.
Sure, absolutely, absolutely. Thank you for bringing that up.
Absolutely.
We have not started.
Okay.
As a matter of fact, we are planning to start in the next few weeks. We just hired some auditors, and so that is starting in the next few weeks. And just for background purposes, SB 1383 requires that on an annual basis, we do curbside audits. So we have to go and audit a percentage of the customers that we service to check and see if there's any cross-contamination in the containers. And, and that's what we are having to do moving forward. We're only going to do about 2% of the customer base, which is a very small amount, and that's on an annual basis. So we hope to, you know, get that done as quickly as possible and chalk that up as another compliance issue with 1383. But we're, we're working on that right now.
Are you guys still concerned about the safety with that last conversation?
We've talked to, we've talked to a number of other cities, especially out in Orange County, they've been doing this for a while, and they have not experienced any issues.
Okay.
We're going to have our folks decked out in CRNR vests and any kind of identifiers that we can put out there to make sure people know who we are. So, yeah, we think we're, we're going to be in, in good shape.
Good, because I remember our last conversation, so it's good to hear, so I appreciate that.
Yes, thank you.
I appreciate what you guys are doing. I want to let you know that. You guys are doing great.
Thank you very much.
Yep, absolutely.
Are they going to have FBI on their vests?
Hope not.
Three other letters, CRNR.
Yeah, I think that the whole purpose of that whole, that program too, is really education. I mean, we're really just trying to educate the, the residents that they are supposed to divert their, their organic material into the, the containers, so that's what their staff will be doing.
Right, and all we're doing is lifting the lid, we're not looking inside, we're just lifting the lid. If we see some cross-contamination, that's where we note it.
Okay.
Fair enough. All right.
Any other questions?
I think we're good, thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
All right, any other comments or questions? We're good? All right, then.
I'll move the item.
I think we need to close the public hearing first, I forgot to do that, so.
No.
Go ahead and do that, and I'm looking for a motion in a second.
I will move.
Second.
All right, please cast your votes. All right, that passes for zero. All right, item number 15 this evening is adopt ordinance amending Title IX of the Temecula Municipal Code, adding chapter 9.80 for shopping carts to find this ordinance exempt from SEQA and SEQA guidelines pursuant to section 15061B3. And we have a presentation ready, Mr. Watson.
Yes, we have a presentation right in front here, thank you.
Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. Today I'll be presenting to you a, the draft shopping carts, cart ordinance. A little background for you, in 2017, the city adopted a set of quality of, quality of life ordinances, part of its response to a compassion camp, compassion campaign, responsible compassion campaign to address trespassing, loitering, and panhandling. Shopping carts were considered to be a part of this, but were put on hold to evaluate potential impacts to local businesses. And tonight, we're here to present that ordinance to you. A little bit of business outreach, on January 12th, staff attended the Temecula Valley Chamber of Commerce meeting and briefed the attendees on the ordinance and its proposed implications. On April 4th to 8th of this year, over four days, staff hand-delivered 82 outreach packets to all of the retailers within the city that provide shopping carts to customers. These packets included a letter explaining the cause for the ordinance, the ordinance itself, and a letter requesting feedback and/or comments within 30 days, as well as a draft ordinance and a business card for contact. Okay. The proposed ordinance would amend the Temecula Municipal Code Title IX, adding chapter 9.80 shopping carts. The ordinance will require specific, specified theft prevention measures. As everyone knows here, this is not a new occurrence, we have new stories here going back from all the way in the late 60s up to 89, showing losses all the way back then. And the Food and Marketing Institute's 2021 annual report details on how shopping cart thefts cost retailers in excess of $800 million annually. The size of the issue here in Temecula, we have 80-plus businesses that provide an estimated 9,000 shopping carts, and that's a total investment of about $2 million for businesses here. And if we take an 8% loss, which is a conservative estimate, we have a total of 720 shopping carts that are stolen or abandoned every year, costing local businesses an estimated $144,000 annually to repair, replace, and have them returned. Cost to taxpayers, the City of Temecula paid approximately $27,000 to retrieve, store, and return or salvage shopping carts in 2021. This does not include the cost of staff time, lost productivity, and other items. State law, California Business Professions Code makes it a misdemeanor to remove all a shopping cart from the premises. Trouble is, if there is no sign on the shopping cart, like the five above there in the images, it is not considered theft. So none of these shopping carts taken would be considered stolen, per state law. And the cart must be taken with intent to deprive the owner, another difficult thing to prove. Cart must be missing for 72 hours prior to the city taking action. Immediate action is allowed when a public safety concern or in the public right of way. Okay. We have some surrounding jurisdictions that have implemented shopping cart ordinances. The City of Glendora implemented one in 2020, the City of Lake Elsinore in 2016, City of Monterey Park in 2014, and then the City of San Clemente implemented one all the way back in 1994, and they updated it this past year. Our proposal would require signage on all shopping carts and business entry and exits. Theft prevention methods would be required, three options are presented, one required. Those options are a coin token deposit for cart use, think of Aldi's, they use that method. Businesses can provide shopping carts for sale or rent to customers, or businesses can install a perimeter disabling device. This will be applicable to all new developments that make shopping carts available for customer use, with exemptions provided. Then this will be applicable to all existing businesses that provide shopping carts within one year of ordinance adoption. Okay. The exemptions mentioned, they would be for small businesses that provide shopping carts in quantities of 10 or less, and then businesses that provide shopping carts that can't physically be removed from the store, as shown below, you can think of Kohl's, and I believe Marshals have carts similar to that. And just some graphics here for our options, everyone's probably seen these at Aldi's. Option two would be the carts for sale or rent, they average about $19 retail. And then option number three is a magnetic or electronic wheel lock system. This is kind of becoming the industry standard throughout, and actually, our own Food for Less installed one of these recently on their own, and they've had a very substantial positive impact on their thefts. They've gone down substantially. So our business outreach and our general observations when we were visiting all the businesses, almost all of the businesses agreed this is an ongoing issue, and some of the smaller retailers have even gotten rid of their shopping carts in favor of shopping baskets, just due to the increased cost of replacing the carts. And many managers and employees were unaware of the store's responsibility regarding their shopping carts. Some even believed it was a function of the city to collect the carts and return them. I did learn that the modern electric mobility scooters are actually already electronically tethered, so a system's in place. So some of these stores can just build on what they already have. And then, as I mentioned earlier, Food for Less recently installed a magnetic wheel lock, and they've had great success with it. So this ordinance was presented to the subcommittee a few times, it was presented to the City Council Public Safety Subcommittee, as well as a planning, forgive me, the Planning Commission Shopping Center Subcommittee on two occasions. The Planning Commission heard the proposed ordinance at a duly noticed public hearing on June 15th of this year, and Resolution 2022-16 was adopted for O, recommending that the city council approve planning application number LR 210909, a proposed citywide ordinance relating to the management and control of shopping carts. Staff recommendation is that city council introduce and read by title only an ordinance entitled, an ordinance of the city council of the City of Temecula amending Title IX of the municipal code, adding chapter 9.80 shopping carts, and find this ordinance exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA pursuant to SEQA guidelines, section This concludes, concludes my presentation, I'm available for questions.
All right, thank you. Any questions?
Just a comment, and I have noticed that since we've, since we passed or adopted the ordinance, it was tremendous a difference in the number of carts we see around town.
Good. Do we have any public comment this evening? So I'm going to open and close that public hearing? All right. All right, any other questions, comments from council? All right, I am looking for a motion in a second.
I'll read the title.
Sir.
This is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Temecula, amending Title IX of the Temecula Municipal Code to add chapter 9.80 shopping carts and finding this ordinance exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA pursuant to SEQA guidelines, section 15061B3, long-range planning project number LR 210909.
All right, let's see, if we could cast our votes, please. And that passes for zero. Thank you so much, and thank you staff for all your work on getting this thing across the finish line. I know it's not the most charismatic thing that we do as a city, but it's an important one, and I think, hopefully, we'll also see this, especially when we talk about inflation and a lot of the costs to our customers, these are just being passed on. And so if you estimate, you know, $150,000 annually that these businesses are being encumbered with, hopefully, this will, will help a little bit in the, in the rising costs. So thank you so much for that. All right, moving on to items for future council agendas, do we have any from anyone? All right, not seeing anything. How about a city manager's report this evening?
You know, real briefly, Mr. Mayor, I apologize, we shouldn't have had to have our new battalion chief introduce himself, but I wanted to officially welcome you, our new battalion chief, Mike Bellinger. Welcome to the City of Temecula, we're happy to have you, and look forward to working with you as well. So again, welcome, sir.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that.
Absolutely, thanks, sir. City attorneys report?
Nothing more tonight.
Well.
Wow, look at that.
Hour and five minutes, I think that's this year's record.
I think so.
I guess we could drag this out a little bit longer if we want to stay and have any conversations, but otherwise, I'm getting the, getting the hook, so we'll see you all next time, thanks so much.
Yay.
One.